Okay. So I'd like to call this November fourteenth, 2022, meeting of the Concord Select Board to order. And let's start as usual with the consent agenda.
Okay. Move to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. I'd just like to note the proclamation for Small Business Saturday that is to be November twenty-six, 2022, that's included in the packet and encourage our town residents to patronize our local businesses. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now to the town manager's report.
Okay. Thank you. You may have noticed we did not prepare a weekly status report last week with the with the holiday and some other things going on. We just ran out of time. So I have just a few updates to offer to you this evening. The main library is going to reopen on Sundays starting in December and through May 2023. And let's see. And the Friends Holiday Book Sale is taking place December first through December fourth. I know the board is aware of this, but I wanted to announce to the public that we have a new communications manager, Donna McIntosh, who has been with the town just for six months or so, serving as the executive assistant. She's transferring to the communications manager. That really is her most recent background in municipal and higher ed, and so that was effective today. Also Lauren Barretta, who is our Assistant Senior Services Director, or who had been, she has been appointed as the Acting Senior Services Director. She's been with the town about seven years. Her background is in nursing and social work, and she will be taking over as a result of the retirement of our long-term director, Ginger Quarles. I will be presenting to the Finance Committee this week on the fiscal '24 budget. This will be the response to the preliminary guideline that the Finance Committee voted in October, maybe it was the end of September. Under the preliminary guideline, they provided very generously a 4% increase to town. I had requested something that was just over 5%. We have just completed our two weeks of very detailed review of the department requests that were submitted, and we're still pretty far apart. So I will be providing an update to them on that. We do have a, an offer was made to a candidate for Sustainability Director. The offer was accepted, and that person is going through pre-placements at this point. So I hope maybe next week I'll have, be able to announce who that candidate is. We did work with a committee made up of both citizens involved in sustain, on some of the sustainability committees and staff that work most closely with the Sustainability Director. The Economic Vitality Manager position was, the classification was voted by the Personnel Board last week, so we will be launching that recruitment this week. I think we will work with the same recruitment firm that is handling the Deputy Town Manager because we're looking for people with similar backgrounds, and I'm hoping that as recruiter is talking to candidates, he may find somebody who is, who's a great match for the Economic Vitality Manager as well. And then the last update I wanted to, to mention to you is on our smart metering project over at the light plant. We don't often include information about the light plant in the, in the weekly status report, and we will do better there. So you may not be completely aware of, of that, the progress of that project, but we have hired a, a vendor, Eaton, and the CMLP staff had their kickoff meeting with the vendor last week.
Is Donna gonna be sitting where she was before, or is she gonna be someplace else?
Well, she's, she's moving into the office, the other office that is in the town manager's office.
So is she going to be doing both jobs or full-time as communication?
So in the interim, she will be doing both, but we hope the interim is not, is not very long.
So you're recruiting for Donna's job?
We are. Fortunately, we've had a number of recruitments for administrative personnel in the last several months, so we're going through the applications we have on file. We have about a hundred. That's one position. We haven't had a shortage of applications, thankfully, so we're hoping we might find a good match in our existing candidate pool.
And will one of Donna's duties be to work on the website?
Yes. So she, we, we re-titled it, we moved away from Public Information Officer to Communications Manager because it's, it's more than just public, public information. She's going to be focusing both on internal and external communications, the website. She will be working with, we have a variety of staff in departments that are involved in preparing news releases and, and maybe social media, so she'll be coordinating all of those staff, doing some work with Minuteman Media Network, and definitely the website.
Great.
Yes.
Great.
Any other questions for the town manager?
Um, Carrie, where's Kelly? Did I miss something?
So Kelly is working on, right now focusing on human resources, some of our strategic initiatives. She also continues to be the Coordinator for the Human Services Department, so the senior center, our Community Outreach Coordinator Veterans Agent. She is continuing to work with them. And she's actually moved over to 55 Church Street, and that's great because that's where all of those offices are. Her, I should mention, her position is, is still a temporary position, and we're working through a reorganization, and so, but that's, that's what she's focusing on at this point.
Now to the chair's remarks. I just wanted to start by noting that this evening I signed a congratulatory letter for Lee Autumn Greenberg to recognize her attainment of the Eagle Scout rank, and that also I wanted to congratulate Donna on assuming her new responsibilities and also thank her for the work that she's done for the town up to this point. And then, you know, finally to say that, as I mentioned last time, that we do want to note content for the town's website, you know, that we as board members, as well as the committee chairs, identify as gaps that we would like to get filled. Then, yes.
What, do you want us to do something specific about that, or?
Yes. If you could send me the, and copying Carrie to the list of stuff that you've seen, that would be great. And I don't know, maybe copy Donna also directly, if that's okay? Yeah.
Stuff we've seen on various pages of the website that needs to be?
Yeah, or just general things. Like I, I just noticed, and I have more questions about it than really absolute directive, that, for example, in the past, we've had extensive minutes of town meeting that have been taken by the Clerk's Office. I believe it's actually one of their official duties, but I can't find them on the website. So, and they would be a great point of reference. So. All right. And then tonight, we will be beginning, but not concluding, discussions about our affordable housing strategy in wake of the recent Christopher Heitz decisions. And I just wanted to say that, from my perspective, this now is a major objective for us as a board to take a leadership role in this area. Okay. Let's then move on to our next item, which is the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail signage recommendations. So I see that Nat Welsh has arrived just in time, and Mr. Welsh, if you could come forward and talk to us about what we are here to approve.
So, thank you for having me tonight on this cool evening. In September, the Friends of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail sponsored a multi-town meeting. All the towns along the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, from Lowell, Chelmsford, Westford, Carlisle, Acton, Concord, Sudbury, and actually someone from Framingham was there as well.
Wow.
Trail's gonna run through there. And the, the, the purpose of the meeting was to talk about, first getting people together and then creating uniform signage. The, I don't know, have you been on the trail, but the current signage, I have a couple of copies, I can pass them around. Current signage looks like this, and other towns are doing slightly different things, and the Friends thought it would be useful to, I have more. There we go. The Friends thought it would be useful to have a uniform look and feel as people went up and down the trail. As you know, the, the symbol for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail is the dragonfly in the marsh. And so the idea on the front, on the first page, or the front of, front of that, is the group came up with eight ideas. I'm just gonna steal this for a second, Shannon, so I can read it. So the, the universal sign would be yield to pedestrians, keep right, pass left, give audible signal when passing, do not block trail, and those would be highlighted in the option that we've, we've recommended to the, to the town. And the second four would be wear helmets, leash pets, remove waste, no littering, carry in, carry out, and respect property adjacent to the trail. The idea was to make these short and simple, so when someone came to the trail, they would see, here, here's what we're hoping you'll do. Just as an aside, there was some discussion about, well, do we have trail open times or closed times, what is the speed limit on or not? The group agreed to table those discussions and discussions of e-bikes, which, you know, will be a hot topic, until further meetings. So our, our recommendation was one sign, which would be the same for all the towns, and each town gets the same recommendation to follow, with the first four rules printed at the top of the sign in larger print and the last four in smaller print underneath. There's some discussion about, do you want to have more in the parking lots, you know, where people gather, you know, more information? That's not part of what our recommendation was. We're still, you know, there's still conversations going on about that. So we wanted to support the Friends and the other towns and recommend that the Select Board approve this approach for the signs. The Friends have agreed to pay for the signs, and I don't know the exact size, I think, I think 24 by something, so it would be a pretty good size, and they would replace the signs that are up there now. So that was our recommendation. And I'm open for questions. Was that helpful? And I'm open for questions.
Yeah. I mean, so to me, just to comment, I think that just to get all those people in the room in the first place is, you know, a big victory. And then for them to agree so quickly on a common sign, it just bodes very well for the future of cooperation among the towns. And then thirdly, to get another organization to agree to pay for the signs so that we don't have to go through a massive process of allocating funds across all these different towns, I'm really grateful to the Friends of the BFRT for doing that. And I look forward to future cooperation, you know, building on this great foundation. So.
There are some big issues, and I've been a bit of a bee in the bonnet of the Friends about having this gathering because I think it hasn't happened since 2006. That was the last time everyone got together. I think that with the completion of the bridge, which is now officially going to be next year, from what I understand, and the advent of more e-bikes on the trail, we're gonna have to have these conversations across the towns to understand, you know, both what the issues are and how each of our communities feels about it. And the Friends are an incredible organization in terms of their ability to pull these people together. And then the woman, Carleen Hempel, who ran this, ran it with an iron fist in terms of, this is what we're focused on, that's a good point, you know, we'll put that here.
Velvet club, though.
Right. A velvet club, yes.
But she was very diplomatic about it, and she, she did a fantastic job facilitating. I think there were, I don't know, forty or fifty people in the room.
Forty, fifty people, yeah.
And all kinds of ideas, and in less than an hour and a half, we had this consensus.
And one of the things I do want to point out, we had first responders, we had the deputy chief from Acton, I think, and, and a couple of other folks from police departments in other towns, is that they were, you know, participating in this, but one of the things that came out is enforcement, right? The, the police departments aren't there to enforce these things. So part of our, I think, our long-term goal is, and this goes along with other things that we've talked about here, which is how do you, how do you get people to listen and behave and, and, you know, work in a shared space the way that they should? But the fact that they said, you know, we don't have time or, you know, ability to enforce these rules is a lesson that we're carrying into, I think, our other discussions as we, as we go forward.
My question is about the sentence that says, "Communities would further agree to remove all other rule signs so that these uniforms rules are govern the trail." Now, it was my understanding that there were some requests for special signage in the Junction Park about dismounting from bikes or other, other directions to, you know, to make that, that space more, the, the, the multiple uses more compatible, and we did have a special issue about that. So it says, "Remove all other signs," that means remove all other signs, doesn't it?
Right. So that's not our, part of our recommendation. Our recommendation is for the, for the sign as structured, and it'll be uniform signage, you know, with the way, with the things are, are, you know, bolder on top and slightly lighter below. I think the, the other signs, I mean, they're wayfinding signs along the trails and so much. So I think we sort of punted in that the towns are gonna say, okay, well, here's a rule sign, we're gonna replace it with a uniform one. Here's a sign that says, "Watch out for the railroad tracks." We're not gonna remove that sign. So it's, I think it's.
Right. So this is just the, what the Friends say, as opposed to the.
But they're asking us to endorse this, are they not?
No, no. What we're doing tonight.
We don't include that in our recommendation.
Is, we would approve the signs that are for the public way, you know, well, in the public way.
So we may know, we had no deliberation on removing any signs within, in the context of, of uniform signage. So our recommendation is approve these signs, and then Planning and, and Land Management, whoever is responsible at Public Works, will figure out, okay, which signs do we replace and where do we put them? So we're just talking about format and wording.
Oh, so this, that would not, this would not prohibit non-uniform signs?
Look, if you go out on the rail trail, there are a lot of signs out there already. We were just trying to tackle one issue, which was, can we have a shared agreement on kind of what the rules of the road are in here?
So we're not ruining it for everybody if we want to have a special sign in Junction Park?
Right. This is, this is, that has nothing to do with what we're recommending here. There already are signs in Junction Park, more than probably there need to be, and there are probably more that will be added, I'm sure, at some point.
Okay. Yes, Linda?
Nat, you may have already touched on this in part, but where would they be placed and who will be making that decision?
I believe Marcia and/or someone else in Public Works will determine exactly where they go. We didn't, I think part of our assumption was they're wayfinding, they're, they're signs like this already in place, and so we're gonna replace those where, where they stand.
Yeah. I think that's the main thrust of this.
I think there are four signs in Concord that would be replaced, but again, we're only, we're an advisory group, so Marcia and the Public Works Department would say, you know, and Safety Officer would say, okay, we should have it here, we should have it there. We're not making no recommendations on number or location.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, who from Concord was participating in this meeting?
So I was there, Deborah Adelman, who's head of, Chair of our Safety Subcommittee. Ms. Ackerman was there. There were some other Concord, let's see, Barbara Pike from, from the Friends was there. Barbara has a list of all attendees, if you're, if you're interested. I don't, I didn't, I didn't get a copy.
Okay. Thank you.
From our committee, it was Deborah, Adelman, myself.
And. There'd have been some others. Was Richard there?
Richard, I think, was there, but he was off on the side.
Right.
He wasn't at the table. Only a few of us were at the table.
Marcia is raising her hand on Zoom right now.
Okay. Good. So Marcia asked me soon, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Yes. These are going to replace the, the signs that we have in the parking lots at Commonwealth Ave, and I think there are signs similar to this in, at the end of the commuter parking lot in West Concord. And then we have the rule signs also at Powder Mill Road just before the tunnel. So the signs that are proposed will replace the existing signs that we have in place.
Thank you. Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Welsh or comments before we have a motion? All right, then. Could you?
Okay. Move to approve the placement of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail signage as included in the board packet.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Yes.
You too.
Thank you, Marcia.
So now we have that unusual feeling of being a little ahead of schedule.
Keep it up.
So now we're going to have kind of a workshop, if you will, to get ourselves started on this affordable housing strategy. And the way I wanted to start was to have Liz Rust, who runs our Regional Housing Services Office, speak to what our peer communities are doing about affordable housing, to just give us a sense of what's out there, what's possible. Then to proceed with a discussion led by Alan Cathcart, who hears here in the room from the DPW, to discuss the infrastructure and utility requirements and restrictions that we have in Concord that might affect the types of projects that can be proposed or where they would be cited. Then, thirdly, to talk to members of our housing, affordable housing bodies about the near-term, any near-term projects that they're currently working on. And then finally, to preview the Housing Production Plan, a draft of which was included in your packet, but not to do a full review of the Housing Production Plan, but rather really to focus on the action plan component in the appendix and, and also just brainstorming and any further, any kind of inputs that we could seek at this time so that our more comprehensive discussion of the Housing Production Plan in December can be more effective. So with that, do we have Ms. Rust with us this evening?
I don't know that she's on just yet.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. Well, we are a little early, I have to say, and we could go out of order. We don't have to do this in, in precise order. So in fact, since I see Mr. Cathcart here, why don't we start with him?
Good evening. Thank you for the invite. Alan Cathcart, Public Works Director. I believe when I spoke with Carrie a little earlier, I understand it's to identify and discuss a little bit on sort of the most significant constraint that we've identified. And I think the Christopher Heitz project sort of brought this to the fore. That's the challenge we have in Concord with wastewater capacity. Generally speaking, when you're talking about a large project with significant flow, you are talking about a connection to municipal sewer. Just as a reminder to this group and people who are watching, about a third of the town is served with municipal sewer, about two-thirds of the town are served with private septic systems. The town of Concord, just the character of it and sort of how it's built out in the past, has been somewhat informed by that specific infrastructure constraint by design. I'll go back to the seventies, when the Clean Water Act was first adopted. There was a lot of consideration for communities' needs, specifically on the wastewater side, primarily to look at what kind of infrastructure was required to treat wastewater to meet standards of, of the time. During that time, there was 90% state and federal funds that were made available for systems to invest in treatment, specifically wastewater treatment. I was not here at the time, but I inherited, when I came in 1996, some personnel who were working in Concord and familiar with the original design concept. And we talk about engineer design because you design things according to plans, and the plans that were established in the seventies, early eighties was Concord was not interested in expanding its facility to the point where it would then entertain and could consider significant growth. Wastewater historically has been used as, to some degree, a control on growth, and that's okay. But the facility that was designed and constructed with a lot of state and federal funds in the mid-eighties was capped at a 1.2 million gallons a day. If you scroll forward to 1996, we were at, operating about 80% of that capacity, and that would trigger a requirement to do an assessment through EPA to say, all right, you know, where are you headed? Do you have sufficient treatment capacity? This is a time to check back in and kind of see where you are and what your needs are. We pulled together a very exhaustive assessment. It was a comprehensive wastewater master plan that was convened. It included participants from Public Works, Planning, Land Management, including NRC and Board of Health, a planning group, a Select Board, and we had somewhere in the total about 70 community meetings. It was very involved. A primary tenant at the time was, we know we have some capacity reserve available, we want to have a growth-neutral plan. This is, you know, back in the early 2000s, but we do want to serve those parts of town that we know are, are struggling or challenged to meet compliant Title V systems. So that was a primary tenant of the CWMP in 2000. Shortly afterwards, we identified a few neighborhoods, areas that we thought we could expand. One of the concerns, and this is always an issue, I'm gonna go back to the mantra of, if you build it, they will come, concern of Concord. At that time, we identified neighborhoods that really were struggling to satisfy their Title V environmental protection interests. We identified that we would target the limited capacity we have to serve those designated neighborhoods, and they were voted on at town meeting as far as what would qualify. The reason being, if you're outside that area, you would not be knocking at the door saying, well, we need sewer too. We did this exhaustive assessment to help prioritize. So town meeting did that for us. We also identified the first phase. It was phased into a four-phase program that was, at the time, and plans are great, it was a 10-year plan, and it was dependent on a few things, but generally it's economics and, and finance. We approved at town meeting Phase One, which involved design and construction, support with the assessment of betterments to this, these neighborhoods. It was Old Bedford and Bedford Street area and Prairie and Central Street in that area over in West Concord. Those were our first phase. Went through a very successful design, construction project, but before we could release that as a project, we were partnering with Planning to try and identify and address concerns of the neighborhood to say, well, if you bring sewer to our neighborhoods, you're gonna dramatically change the character, potentially. You're relieving a wastewater constraint of Title V systems. So we developed, and this was sort of drummed in with these neighborhood meetings, we need sewer for existing problems, but we don't want to invite unintended growth. So we worked with Planning, had some models that Marcia could talk about that they vetted. They were, I think, flatly rejected by the community because they had a lot of impacts on the potential growth of single-family lots. We ended up with a one-connection-per-partial concept that we adopted through the sewer regs, which we've been living with ever since. The intent of that was to, you know, demonstrate we could extend sewers without necessarily changing the character or creating infill that wasn't anticipated. So we went through the first phase of construction. So we went through the first phase of construction. People started connecting. Shortly afterwards, we got information through planning that they were embarking on a housing production plan or something like that. And this was sort of the mid aughts. It was 2007, 8-ish. And at that point, we said, well, that's okay, but let's dial back five years. With wastewater, we're kind of fixed. We haven't made a commitment. We have limited capacity. At that time, we started to evaluate potential needs for expanding the wastewater capacity and looking at various alternatives, including package treatment plant considerations. Those are small systems to meet neighborhood interests. But we really wanted to sort of put bookends to the build-out potential of the town without a design and without really identifying lot by lot, like we had done before, eligibility, but even areas. So we looked at some of the downtown areas. We looked at some of the zoning and went through various analysis and algorithms on if we changed zoning to allow increased density, what kind of flow could we anticipate? So we can kind of put that in our planning pouch and start looking at expansion and what that would look like. At the time, we identified somewhere between, I think it was 320,000 gallons a day need. That was a baseline. If we were, the town was to realize all of this, I'd say visionary build-out. Up to, it was like 500, almost 600,000 gallons a day, which was, I'd say, a little bit less unbridled development. And those were the bookends. So we started looking at, well, how would we accommodate this? Because we don't have that available with the existing permit. We went through a very aggressive assessment of a groundwater discharge site. This is what you would do for a package treatment plant. We actually identified a couple of areas and we ended up looking at the treatment plant. And we identified a potential, it's not ideal, but it potentially a permissible groundwater discharge site at that facility that would allow us to expand the 1.2 million gallons to close of 155,000 gallons. What we'd have to do is have a split stream treatment, one that would be a direct discharge out to the Concord River. That's historically where the NIPD's permit. And side-stream it to a groundwater discharge site on that same campus. It would require different treatment because it's going to the groundwater. It was, it's not inexpensive alternative. But that was sort of in our back pocket, one relief valve. And again, we talked about 320,000 gallons a day to 600. We identified 155,000 gallons that if we needed to go above and beyond our original plan, that was our relief valve. The cost at the time was about 3.5 million, based, and that was sort of in the early, you know, like 2010. I would imagine it's at least double that now. We have not exceeded our existing capacity at the treatment facility. After sort of, you know, bringing up speed where we've allowed that first phase of development, the other phases, we haven't moved on because there has been no really strong economic signal says it's the right time to do it. It would have been very expensive. And the first phase was an easy sell because the people in those areas were spending lots of money to upgrade and replace their septic systems. We haven't had a lot of clamor to see the next couple of phases, but we also know it'd be very, very expensive. So what we have seen over the years is some increased infill. Infill is those people who have frontage to the sewer system can exercise a right. The one-connection-per-parcel was still a control. But you can imagine something like Brookside Village. That's one connection, but it's significant density. But we've partnered with, the Public Works Commission says, anytime there's something significantly larger than a very large, single-family home and it's infill, we want to be involved with the decision-making process so we don't upset the apple cart of the original plan and build-out. But they will only entertain these projects when there is other community buy-in. They go through the ZBA planning. They've talked with the NRC. And we can say, this is in the public interest. The Public Works Commission will say, well, we have, we're protecting the reserve capacity. But if we have that support, we will release it to this project. Because we haven't moved on some of these others. And we're basically, they do it at some risk because it wasn't part of the original plan. But conceptually, infill is part of the original plan. So that's sort of an overview of some of the wastewater issues over the last 20 years, where we have yet to find capacity above, beyond the permitted allowance, the 1.2. In 2013, we appealed the NIPD's permit with EPA and DEP based on some standards they were including. We didn't think were particularly necessary, fair, and they were very costly. But they, we also, in the appeal, because it's an exercise to go through that, we identified our wastewater constraint with capacity. And we put it into the appeal to EPA. We even made it down to Washington DC at the Environmental Appeal Board, the EAB, to make our case to explain Concord's, you know, challenge with wastewater capacity. And at the time, we said, if you increase through this process our flow, we will reduce, increase the treatment at that facility. So it's basically
Neutral.
Exactly. The impact with pollutants would be neutral. And at the time, they said, interesting argument, however, you didn't preserve your right to make this case because he didn't ask for that capacity when you went to renew your permit. So message to, you know, to ourselves, next time around, we'll include that ask. Next time around was 2017. We included the increased capacity as well as all the information that they request to review. And we just found out within the last couple of months that they have rejected our request to increase the capacity as part of this permitting cycle. And they volunteered, you have the right, it's called anti-degradation, to come back to us with new information. But you need to demonstrate that any increase in flow will not increase pollutants. And that's interesting because that whole scenario has evolved. Where pollutants used to mean those things that we are well, we're familiar with. Nitrogen, phosphorus primarily, BOD. Those are the sorts of things that waste streams from a, you know, a community like Concord. Well, now, they've been looking at contaminants of interest and emerging contaminants and things that really, the universe hasn't gotten its arms around. And they're basically saying, you can increase the flow, but you have to demonstrate that you're not going to degrade the quality. And we're putting this new obstacle in your way, and that's how I see it. So how do we go about demonstrating that we're not going to have any adverse water quality on emerging contaminants and things that are really relatively new to the industry? So they've basically denied our, the easier path, the one that historically should have worked. I will say this, in Massachusetts, we are not, it's not a delegated state for EPA, which means DEP doesn't control it. Region 1 is New Hampshire and Mass are, the states don't have primacy, so we need to get a permit through EPA. I think most other states get to go and work directly only with their state agency. There might be only three. I don't know, Idaho, Massachusetts, New Hampshire are still, you know, don't have primacy. But we have to sort of wrangle with EPA to try and figure out, well, what do we do? What can Concord do other than potentially spend a lot of money on a side-stream groundwater discharge site that really only has 155,000 gallon capacity? Very expensive. And we are looking at the future as to, you know, Concord's decision from the 70s has come back to haunt us because these other communities, many of them don't have the same constraint. They haven't been dealing with this because they built facilities for, you know, expansion or they had industry and that sort of, you know, economy, which has ebbed and flowed. So they've been able to work within their limits. Concord has only expanded, but we really haven't been able to, you know, sort of stress the wastewater. So that's, that is the history. It's long and detailed and deliberate and strategic. But it, this is where we are today, which is why when Christopher Heights came to say, you know, in the planning decision in the 11th hour, we can't do what we need to on-site. And that was really what the CWMP was about. If you can design, construct on that property, that would be, you know, up to the individual. For us, it really required a change in the whole, one of the primary tenants of the expansion of our facility. And that's what it was required to meet a use that hadn't been, in a, at a parcel that hadn't been identified for service back at town meeting.
So what happens when you hit the top limit? No more? No more connections?
Basically, a couple of things. We've hit it before. But it was at a time where it was very wet, period. And there were a lot of communities that were ending up with these exceedances. So they looked at it and they said, that was an excursion. That's not sort of predictable. If we hit the limit, they can literally call us in and say, first, impose a moratorium. Second, let's go through a consent order so we can then work on a schedule with Concord to get you back into compliance, whatever that may be.
So, but this affects equally affordable and non-affordable and commercial?
And commercials, yeah. I mean, I heard at least a rumor that at one point, you know, a restaurant owner was trying to expand the number of tables and they were unable to because of this.
No, so the restaurant, the real issue and another sort of, something that's very important is the, it, it's the cost. So the sewer improvement fee is a mechanism that was placed through town meeting in 1989. Basically, what that said is, that came about the time where there was a potential development that wasn't friendly. And it was a large residential development over off Sudbury Road.
Yeah, the Normandy project.
So that triggered this need to say, we're, we're not just expanding to meet private interests. They also developed the sewer improvement fee to say, as people are utilizing the available capacity, they need to put into this, this fund, which is dedicated, that will be set aside to allow for expansion, when and if it hits. So basically, the ratepayer doesn't have to absorb that
Cost of growth.
Breaks the camel's back.
But can you actually generate enough revenue from those fees in order to pay for the necessary expansion?
We have significant funds available, millions of dollars. So that could go towards, for instance, that groundwater discharge site to offset the costs of the ratepayer. We use some of it for the INI that we do to tighten the system. One thing to kind of realize with sewer systems, when they were originally designed, they're really intended as conduits to get wastewater from a downtown area into a pond, stream, ideally a river. And then just carry downstream. That was the intent of their design. Turn of the century, they started looking at, well, we can do better than that. So they started considering sand filtration, just natural gravity into sand filtration. We have a sand filter over at that existing site. That was the original wastewater treatment plant, 1900, just sand. And it would be, it went down, all the, all the wastewater from the downtown area through gravity was collected over at Kaiser Road in that Planning Land Management Building. That was a pump station and an electric generator to generate electricity for lights during the evening. And a generator with pumps to pump the wastewater to the sand beds. And it was right on the rail line so it could get, you know, coal for power. That was the intent of that facility. But, so the improvements went from 1900 from sand filtration to the 1950s. It was a very crude treatment facility.
We can't go into all this history. But we do need to talk about some potential solutions, though. Mary?
I have a question. Alan, thank you for that history.
Yeah.
I have a question. The 2002 master plan, right, outlines what neighborhoods can and cannot be served by the sewer, right?
Correct.
How difficult would it be to have a process where there would be exceptions to that or maybe changes to that? So some neighborhoods would be eliminated and some would be added if there was an affordable housing element tied to that? How, is that possible to do that?
So the two governors on this that I see was town meeting to some degree.
Okay.
And the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. So they are, that's the secretary. Now, what that could mean is, we could look at some alternative and we could determine, does it significantly change the plan that was certified? I say the state because it's a certified plan we submitted. We'd have to do an analysis to find out, is that enough to warrant a complete, new, comprehensive wastewater master plan? Probably not. Does it warrant a notice of, you know, a project change? Which could be a more streamlined approach, potentially. You know, assuming there was an agreement and maybe it went through town meeting. Because the town is really that governance that, you know, has said, this was a commitment. And if you're going to change it, let's make sure we all know what and why. But so it might be a town meeting and then a determination is, what does that look like? And it may be something where we say, we identified a neighborhood. I'll give you an example. The neighborhood over off of Cambridge Turnpike had been tentatively identified as one of the priority areas. And when we did Cambridge Turnpike, we sort of evaluated at the time the cost to do the sewer and the real need in that neighborhood. It just, the cost benefit wasn't there. So we proceeded, so we did major improvements without expanding sewer because we didn't want to impose that.
Kind of too late now.
Well, yeah, and it, well, that was a decision. So we could go back and say, you know, we will never go there and just clean that up. There's some allowance that could potentially be used elsewhere. So we could look at that needs assessment potentially. That would be a way of reshuffling the deck a little bit. Our real problem is the capacity.
Yeah, so I guess the, the other approach here is not so much to build out our own capacity, but to use someone else's capacity. And I've heard some creative concepts about that recently. And I guess that's really what I'm focused on for tonight. It's not so much how we got here, although it is interesting to find out. But that, you know, what can we do to get ourselves out of this place from an affordable housing perspective? Specifically, I think, also more generally for the town's development interests, but, which have evolved, I think.
Yeah. For instance, if you reallocated the available capacity or what we've can identify, so that's going to affordable housing.
Yeah.
And maybe not economic growth development for business, but you're always going to have those
Yeah, well, I think we want both.
And that's where, you know, at some point, there might be an allowance that says, we're going to X for affordable housing, X for, you know, economic growth and development. And, you know, while we actually explore increasing the capacities through a more creative way that, you know, I think
Yeah, I'd rather add a few more cards to the deck than anything else.
But you're saying that if, if there is a sewer improvement payment in connection with development, that would enable you to meet the demand?
Not, we don't have a solution yet. The only solution we have is that 155,000 gallons.
No permit to go build a bigger thing, no matter how much money they have.
So sewer improvement fee doesn't allow a person to connect. It just would, means that if they could connect, then they would have to pay.
Yeah, given they have, they're able to connect through the existing plan, they, they can connect and they have to pay in. And that's, so they would be allowed, once they pay, once it's determined they can connect because it's in the town's interest, and they pay. And that goes into a future expansion.
Okay, but paying doesn't allow them to connect if the capacity is not currently there.
Correct.
So it is a hard stop.
It could be if there was a moratorium imposed by EPA, the EP. If we, if we meet our, if we, we trip that 1.2 million gallons a day, they don't have to say, well, where are you in your planning process? Say, you're exceeding your permit. What are you doing about that?
And I assume that solutions such as, like diverting stormwater out of the treatment plant is, is not feasible, or is it already done?
It's not cost-effective.
It's a part of the, we are investing in that and we are trying to get out, thank you. That was the point of tightening that. Infrastructure can create some capacity. We do spend money routinely on tightening the existing infrastructure.
What about not permitting disposals? Does that affect capacity?
No, not so much. That's the nutrient load.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions from the board? Yes, some people we haven't heard from, yes.
So for the, just looking So for the, just looking for the name of it, the groundwater discharge. Do we need another permit for that? Or does we just need to raise a lot of money for that?
No, so we know, there's a two phase in order to get a groundwater discharge permit through the state. The first is a hydrogeologic assessment. That's a technical assessment. That's what we completed. The next one was.
It is completed.
We completed that.
Okay.
So knowing that we have the potential of, it's really a flow of 155,000 gallons using those existing sand beds over there. That's kind of the footprint. We would then go through the design and permitting for that groundwater discharge in more detail. You know, what is the side stream treatment? You know, how would that look? We'd have to go through that permitting process anew. We have money set aside that we would invest in the fund that's been paid by all those people who have been adding. The question is, you know, the funds, we may have 50% of what would be needed to design and construct the actual facility at this point. So we have a good, you know, reserve for that purpose.
Okay, Linda?
So Alan, if I understood you correctly, you said we're not at capacity. Infill is the, was the strategy? And it would take public support to use that infill?
I believe to change the commitment. Because we still have on paper in town meeting, we're going to serve this neighborhood, that neighborhood, that neighborhood. We'd have to go back and say, we're not.
We have a new plan.
And we have a new plan.
Well, in fact, it sounds like we might want to consider whether we take something to town meeting.
Right.
And it would be nice, I think that's the first action item we have to have tonight is to understand, A, whether it's feasible to do that for this year? And B, what would such a warrant article look like?
And what's the map?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a lot of work, but I think that it sounds like it's one of the preconditions for us to really make significant progress.
Yeah, that, I would suggest that effort is a very lot of work, given it was 70 meetings to get to.
Yeah, well, it's a different kind of plan this time. And it's a different era. But even so, you're right. And it may not be feasible for this town meeting. And maybe it's not that time critical, given the timelines for development. But that said, I think getting to a decision sooner rather than later is probably very helpful.
Yeah.
Okay. And I think that we need to bring this element to a close fairly quickly. Take two more questions, how about that?
So if we look at, how do we remove sewage wastewater as a constraint for affordable housing, right? One of the things we talked about was kind of reallocating what we already have in the 2002 master plan, right? That's one thing, right? One is, the other would be just to increase overall capacity, which you're saying would cost about $7 million to get about 155,000 gallons, right?
Yeah, 10%.
And then there, and then the next thing would be other more creative things to do that Matt was mentioning. So do we have anything, you have anything in mind?
That we could talk about?
That we could talk about?
So the first one is the balance of, I'm going to say your business community. I'm just pointing out MBTA, you know, the zoning relating to density is going to be a driver. And we know Baker Ave is, you know, a lot of interest over there. So we just, the balancing of affordability and in business, I think has to be a significant discussion. That's, that's to reallocate. Then the, I would hold off on the groundwater discharge until we were forced to go there. Forced meaning that might be our first play if we ended up exceeding our capacity, saying, we have this in reserve. Strategically, we didn't just stumble into this. This is our first offer. The other one, I would say is the long term, is where we really have to look at Concord setting a model for a water resource management plan. And you've heard me talk about integrated water resource management. And that's where we look at our stormwater challenges that are EPA, they're MS4, NITIS related, they're regulatory compliant issues. The drinking water side, which you're going to hear more and more about as we talk NAGOG and potential alternatives to our source of supply and wastewater. If we can do that strategically and creatively, I'd like to say we could provide environmental protection, which is really what the Clean Water Act is all about, and address the community needs and interests when it comes to a real build out. And that's going to take some time, but that's a more creative, long-term solution. It's just, you know, to me, I'm advocating, we need to start looking at that so that we spend money in the right place and not just chasing buses.
Okay, because I had just, you heard about system tie-ins as possibilities too for.
For what?
Getting some additional capacity localized.
For wastewater?
Yeah.
You still have to treat it.
Okay.
So you have to have a treatment facility and that's.
Well, but they have treatment facilities.
Oh, were you talking about regional?
Yeah.
They don't have the same ability to expand on wastewater as they do drinking water.
Okay, all right.
So you've basically answered my question, I think. But just to clarify, what do you, thank you for all of this information and for all of your knowledge in this. And what would you advise us and the rest of the staff and committees going forward in the next 12 to 24 months? What should we concentrate on? What to end up somewhere?
I think the discussion on reallocations is a worthy one. I think understanding what we are in public works and we're working with Planning Land Management, NRC, to look at this integrated approach, what that may mean. It may mean to have some of the political will of the community sitting down as part of the discussions. And we're trying to, I don't want to say, we're trying to inform a process that doesn't exist, but universally is understood to make sense. So it would be good to have you, you know, this group represented at the table as we talk, because of public works. And I know when I was water sewer only, you can only go so far with sort of that influence. But I also think partnering with the watershed groups like Oars, you know, where we can have conversations so they can be a part of this discussion, understand Concord is trying to do the right thing. What can we do to help Concord do the right thing?
Okay.
If you reallocate, that means taking capacity away from a neighborhood, right? You're not taking away connections from people already connected. But it means people who own land that is not yet developed in that district can, can no longer develop that land. So you're taking.
Well, they can't interconnect with sewer. They could do septic.
More importantly, Henry, it's people who have septic that they know is going to be expensive to replace. They will no longer have that option to say, well, maybe we'll get a betterment to pay for.
Yeah, that's probably the most common.
So in other words, they get expensive septic systems.
Yes.
Okay, so that becomes a cost.
To them.
Okay, all right. I think we need to move on. Thank you, Mr. Cathcart, that was a very good background. And now I'd like to invite Ms. Rust up to give her review of what other communities are doing about their affordable housing and see if we can learn from them.
Hi, I'm Liz Rust. I'm the director of the Regional Housing Services Office and resident at 201 Commonwealth Avenue. I thought I might start with the housing production plan and then go from there.
Okay, all right. Although I think, I don't know if you were here when we were introducing the topic, but.
No.
I was saying that, you know, we do have a scheduled review of the housing production plan in December. So this is almost a little bit of a preview that we got tonight. And I, and I, what was, I was directed to look at really mostly was the action plan with an eye to what role the select board specifically could play relative to these initiatives. So that's the sort of zeroing in of what we'd like to talk about relative to that plan tonight. I probably should have given you a little bit more.
I'm pretty flexible, so.
So, yeah, I thought that that was going to be kind of a brainstorming discussion among ourselves mostly, rather than a dog and pony on.
So, but I did want to say two things about the housing production plan before we move off that. One is that we're having, so the first draft just got sent out last week and we're having a public forum tomorrow night on Zoom at 7:00 PM. So that that's on the town website. And the reason why I thought maybe you might want to hear it today is that when it's presented in December, it's really being put to you, it's really being presented for adoption. That's the timeline was to complete it by the end of December. So that if you had comments that you wanted incorporated in the document, it would be before that meeting.
Yeah.
So that was the thought of maybe just providing, you know, an overview today.
Well, it sounds like the first step in the role we could play is to provide comments sooner rather than later.
Yep, so, so can you say again what you want to talk about?
Well, so really, it's again, the role that the select board can play to either contribute to the body of that plan or to help implement the plan. What, you know, we're all ears to hear about what we can do. And in looking at the action plan section, we thought was a place where we might get a hint.
Sure, sure. So I think that that is, if you have, you probably have that there, right?
It's in our packet.
It's in your packet, right? And so for those following along, I think it's probably like on page 50 something, 53.
Right.
53, yes. So the housing production plans, they're legislated or regulatory document and it's required that you adopt them, you and the planning board both. So that really puts you in the overall position for owning the plan and the planning board going forward. So here in the action plan is really the, there are 26 different strategies. And what's identified here is for each of these much more detailed items, who is the primary implementation lead and then implementation support? So items of the highest, you know, policy level would always come from you, right? You have players and in fact, I think that the housing leads are all here, right? So I see Keith is here, Keith Bergman from the Housing Trust and Rich Feely from the Housing Foundation and Lee Smith from the Concord Housing Development Corporation. So those are your, you know, the leaders of those key housing groups to implement the policies and to take the direction from the select board. Are there, do you want to go through them more specifically, Terry, like?
Well, I have some specific comments and questions.
Sure, I think that's great.
Okay, so thank you for coming in now. And I'm really glad that we have this opportunity tonight. Like you say, we're going to be, you're going to be presenting it for adoption in December. And I think this is a model of what we need to do going forward that before the select board is asked to endorse or adopt something, that we have kind of a brainstorming input. And I have been to two of the housing forums, but I can't go tomorrow night. So I'm really glad to have this opportunity. So the action plan I found to be very helpful. So overall, I thought the select board should be mentioned more often in some of these. And then some other committees that I'll just go through quickly, like number six, the green building design. I think CAB should be involved, the Climate Action Advisory Board. These are just, you know, my suggestions. And in number 20, well, get back to that for a minute. Hold that one. 21, about the infrastructure, like sidewalks, bike lanes, public transit. We should include the Transportation Advisory Committee. And you guys decide if who's the leads and who's the support, but definitely to include them. And in 25 and 26, I think we should include the DEI Commission. Definitely about affirmative outreach.
Of course, yep.
Right, okay. And then two specific questions that I had were number 12. I would like to hear more about inclusionary zoning. What is it? What are the pros and cons? Because I really think that the select board should have a good understanding of it and weigh in on that. And then number 20, having just heard from Alan. It talks about a wastewater task force. Do we have such a thing?
No, but it seems like to me, we'll probably need one if we're going to pursue the kinds of initiatives that we talked about. That's getting back to the 70 meetings now. Instead of maybe 70, maybe 17, but you know, something like.
Okay, good, okay. So those were my comments.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to hear about inclusionary zoning or at another time? I think on the, in the audience, both Elizabeth Hughes and Marsha are here and I'm sure they would be glad to talk about.
Right, and we recently had a setback on inclusionary zoning relative to our subdivision.
Right, that's specific. I think this is a little bit broader proposal.
Yeah, I am curious what the nature of it would be, so that.
Yeah. I don't know if we can see them, Marsha or Elizabeth, are you?
Yeah, we need to move now to the gallery view, at least temporarily.
And there's Marsha.
There's Marsha, yes.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't think I can add anything right now because it's just, it's a general term. And I know other communities have implemented inclusionary zoning. We would need to look at that and then see how it would fit in with Concord's, Concord's goals and desires.
Okay, Ms. Hughes, do you have anything to add? Here we are.
Now, what, you know, what was struck down was the inclusionary zoning that was included, incorporated into our subdivision rules and regs, which is what the courts struck down. Zoning is something that the town, a zoning aspect of inclusionary zoning has not been something that the town has researched in and how that gets incorporated into the zoning bylaw and where it gets incorporated. We currently have affordable housing requirements, you know, already in certain combined business residents, combined business residents industrial, the planned residential development. We already have some aspect. So it, how, how else it can be incorporated into zoning would have to be looked into.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like another good action item, but it does seem like the lead on that would need to be the planning department and the planning board.
Correct. So I wanted to.
Something on that, just because there's been a lot, it's a lot of discussion. I'm Keith Bergman.
Yeah, and I don't know if you want to get a microphone.
Thanks very much. Great question about inclusionary zoning because that's the one thing where we would not, the town would get affordable units and you wouldn't have to pay for them with public funds. So good question, please focus on that. Because what it is, is that if the town establishes through the zoning bylaw, what percentage of new development would have to be deed restricted as affordable? And so that's, those are units that are produced by the market and not just by public funding. So, so that's why there's, there's a big emphasis on inclusionary zoning along with many other things.
Yeah, and I know that we have.
Probably the most important.
We have had kind of ups and downs with the approaches we've tried, the thresholds that we've picked. Because sometimes it, the threshold of it's too high, it demotivates that form of development. And there usually is sort of an alternative form of development that isn't as desirable for the town. So it's been a trade off. And I know that we have tuned the thresholds over time. And while it, what, I think what it does probably, when it works, is offset the impact of the new development. It usually doesn't generate net new affordable units relative to our goal.
Concord has the planned residential bylaw.
Yeah.
Which has an affordable housing component and is very popular and works well for developers. And a lot of units have been built and developed and a lot of affordable units have been delivered through that bylaw.
But they just offset the new growth of the development itself, for the most part. That's what happened. And that's a good thing.
Similar to the inclusionary zoning.
Definitely better than a subdivision.
I had thought that this was a specific part of the general law that we could accept and would make us more eligible for certain state grants that we're not eligible for, for affordable housing.
No, sorry.
The inclusionary zoning up to 10% is something that you may have read about recently because DHCD, the state agency that, you know, oversees planning, has issued revised guidelines for so-called MBTA communities zoning, which right now has requirements for multifamilies to use by right. used by right, which would just be market rate. There's no provision for affordable at all. But the recommendation, the revised guideline, would allow a community in meeting its MBTA community's goal to incorporate inclusionary zoning up to 10% as, so you'd get that level of affordability along with the new...
Yeah, at least that offset, yeah.
He should just stay here.
But what's implicit, what's implicit in that analysis is that the object is to satisfy the requirements of 40B rather than to provide housing.
Well, I think that it is to provide housing, but yes, the threshold that I think that is almost a stretch goal that we're trying to meet is that 10% threshold. And I think it's a worthy threshold, because it does have implications, legal implications. So I do think that it's a worthwhile benchmark. Now, is it everything? No. But I do think that until, as long as we're below that threshold, or assume that we will be, I think that we need to focus on it as a first step.
Well, and I note that in the production plan, in the initial priorities, the first one is compliance with Chapter 40B. And I think that we need to do more in-depth analysis of what the consequences and what the options are if we are unable to or choose not to comply with the requirements of Chapter 40B. Because what that leads us to do is to build housing that we may not necessarily want or that we may not necessarily need. And so I think that the, we really ought to start our priorities in terms of, for instance, if we want a more diverse population in the town, we may want to, our priority may be to build family housing, not housing that is designed specifically to create a lot of units like Christopher Heights, which is housing that we may disagree about whether we need it or not, but it's, but building housing like that is kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy, because if you raise taxes in order to build that kind of housing, you're making it more expensive for the elderly and lower-income people to live in their existing houses. So they need that kind of housing. So I think the first priority is to make a decision about the mix, essentially, the mix of economic population that we want, and then decide how we get there, rather than having the primary driver be getting 10% affordable. Because remember, affordable does not mean affordable. Affordable means subsidized. And if our object is to have all of our affordable housing be subsidized housing, again, we're making an important policy decision.
I think that we've already discussed that there are cases in which affordable units are generated that are not subsidized as part of an inclusionary zoning provision, for example.
But they don't count toward 40B.
Yes, they do. They do.
I think subsidized...
Oh, you mean, you mean if you have a development which has 10 units, yeah, but they count, but they're, yes.
Okay. Mary?
Actually, I kind of agree with you, Henry, in that sometimes if our main goal is just to avoid a hostile 40B, we sometimes back ourselves into making things that don't meet other goals that we have, and which are, we have a list of goals here. So my question, or my recommendation would be that when we're looking at something, it has to fulfill something more than just that, of, you know, meeting our SHI. So have these goals been, so for example, when we say the 12 acres site in West Concord we have here, that it only meets our production goal, smart growth, and that's it, right? And yet I think we have an opportunity to meet other goals, which you mentioned, something like support healthy aging or smaller homes, right? But that's not listed here. So within the constraints of this framework, right, have these things been prioritized, either the strategies or the goals?
So the goals are, I think, wouldn't be prioritized necessarily that they're set of goals, and we're hoping though on the strategies, because there are 26 of them, which we feel, this is only a five-year plan, and that having 26 strategies to do in five years is really ambitious for the town.
It's one every two months.
Right. So I think that part of that is to prioritize them, and we are hoping maybe to either reduce them, consolidate them, or minimally prioritize them timeframe-wise, so that there's some notion of accomplishing the plan in five years.
Great. So that would be the strategies you're talking about.
Strategies, exactly.
What about the goals?
The goals, I think, are really created equal, and, you know, the strategy's feeding into the goal. So there wasn't really the sense of prioritizing the goals. If you wanted to introduce that, we could certainly look at that.
Wasn't one of the statements in there that we needed essentially to produce 35 additional units each year for the next two years in order to be in compliance?
No, that's to get the certification.
No, that's a certification piece. That's just an option.
Yeah, and it doesn't sound like that's even feasible.
And nothing in this plan is binding. There's no, there's nothing here that binds the town towards any of these strategies. It's a framework to operate under, so there's no, you know, when we use the word compliance, there's no, that implies a little stricter than the plan really is. I wanted to mention one, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, when you look at your role, I was going to bring your attention to strategy number 24. It might be worded a little awkwardly, but, you know, this is to clarify the roles and responsibilities for the housing plan, housing production plan implementation. I want you to just look at that key piece.
Okay, yeah, because I don't even see the Select Board listed here.
Right, I think we should add you into that, right? So Weston, actually, from their housing production plan, established a housing production plan implementation committee comprised of the town manager and then a member of the Select Board and the various groups that meet quarterly to review how things are going, where should the priorities be, how is the housing plan implementation going? And maybe something like that might work.
I think that's a great idea.
So I think that would be that strategy, and if that's something that interests you, we could, you know, certainly add the Select Board, and that would, might help to foster that ongoing communication and prioritization between the parties.
Okay. Other questions relative to this?
I think there's several like that, where the Select Board should be included.
Okay, but I think that it's also important to focus. I mean, we can't do everything. We already try to do too many things.
If you'd also like to send me an email, if you would rather do that offline for things that you want to include in here, I'd be glad to do that also.
Okay, yes, Linda.
So to the points that have been made about identifying the needs and types of housing, in the key findings section, you have specifically talked about the need for smaller housing for seniors, given the percentage of population in seniors, but you've also talked about other housing entry points for younger families.
Right.
And, you know, to the extent that, as someone has already said, but I think it's really important to pull that in somehow.
Yes.
In this action list, because just as Matt started this discussion by saying, let's focus on the action items, that's where people are going to go.
Gotcha. I wanted to mention that, so, you know, Concord has a large number of, what is the number, of senior housing, senior residents.
Right.
And so, you know, developing or providing housing opportunities for the seniors is really an important piece, but also that means that fewer families are coming into town. So it's really both sides, providing housing for your existing residents, but also building housing so that younger folks can come and move into town. So that's where that comes in.
And then in the narrative, you benchmark that against a certain level of affordability. And so somehow, again, trying to pull that out, I don't know how at this point, but trying to pull that out.
Well, and it's interesting to think about, like, a lot of times we pursue trying to get a local option in our affordable things, and that kind of goes against some of the goals to try to diversify the population, you know? So it's something that we should maybe reconsider going forward, you know, to pursue that as a preferred strategy for new units as they come aboard. So I would like to now shift gears to the discussion about what are other towns doing? Now, you did mention Weston just a minute ago, but in terms of the kinds of projects that communities are doing in order to, you know, affect their affordable housing situation.
Well, that's why I was thinking about that. I mean, there's so many different specific examples in other communities, and everyone's a little different, but I think it really breaks into three, three major areas. One is to work on the infrastructure, and you had a great presentation from Alan, and I think that you're aware, I think that Mass Works grants for their sewer and other infrastructure. I talked to Carrie about that, right? So that's it. So there's public funding for those kinds of things, and ARPA funds are certainly available, and then Mass Works. So that's one area to go. The other is leveraging local assets, both land and money, right? So municipal land, so some communities have been able to do that. Sudbury had a land swap, that's how they built that Coldbrook Crossing, did a land swap with the developer. And it kind of goes hand in hand with inviting and facilitating production with private developers. So to Keith's point, is to develop your housing at best, you know, like to have private developers do it for you with your participation and steering, like, that's the goal, right? Because you can't really afford to build it all, of course. So to build those kinds of private-public partnerships, if you will. So to be inviting to developers and, yeah. So I think that there are numerous examples around where people have done that. And it's always specific to, you know, what parcel of land developers might be coming, asking about, inquiring. And I know that when, you know, when the Concord Muse, that was the Concord Muse back then, but now the Prescott, that was a very open dialogue with the town from the developer from day one on that, and very collaborative, and the town got a lot of benefit from that development.
Or even going out and recruiting developers.
Yeah, that's, I mean, you can, yeah. But, I mean, they're usually the ones that have the option on the land, right? So that there, you're going to come to you.
Well, for instance, if we have the land, and a lot of that Housing Authority construction was done on land that belonged formerly to the schools or to the Cemetery Commission or whatever, and now, of course, we have 12 nice acres down Commonwealth Avenue.
What the CHCC does, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's the Star Met Site, you know, over there on Main Street? So, I mean, that's a huge opportunity for housing, you know, out there in the future. And then, of course, there's the middle school. So, you know, those are both, you know, town properties that the town has a lot of control and influence over what kind of development goes on there between commercial, mixed-use and housing. So, you know, those are opportunities that could be opened up, yeah.
How have other towns dealt with the question of scale? You know, that, I think that's one of the areas that we wrestle with most often when we're proposing, you know, either new zoning regulations or if specific projects come in, is the concerns from neighbors in particular, but just generally about the character of the town, about scale. And yet, to be able to generate a significant number of units, you kind of need a larger-scale project. So how, are there projects in other towns that have been success stories or perhaps had trouble for those reasons?
There's always trouble with scale, right?
Yeah.
It's easy to find those projects. So in terms of successes, I mean, I'll go back to the Sudbury project. I mean, there's a lot of units up there. I mean, it's got to be almost 300 units between the age-restricted condos and the family apartments. But it's pretty tucked away, and so, you know, those tucked-away parcels are usually on the edge of the town, right? So they're not very convenient to services, right?
No, that's the thing.
So it's hard to get scale where you're located to services, right?
Right. I mean, walkability, for example, is, you know, in fact, I think that's one of the criteria that we had wanted to do, is to kind of create, while we're creating affordable units, we also want to create a livable place, you know, for those people. And so access to public transit.
Smart growth.
Yeah, right. And, yeah, services and so on. And yet, you know, then there are also that, the village character. So then, how do you do all of that at the same time? And that's where we have struggled.
It's kind of a negotiation. You know, I think that the Christopher Heights project was the scale it was for two reasons. One was the town wanted to get over the 10%. So that was, that was an objective. And in many developments in communities, the larger developments are going to be the ones to get over 10% and be there for some number of decades. I know with the Coldbrook Crossing, if you keep using that one in Sudbury, but that keeps Sudbury over the 10% for a couple of decades. That was the objective, and that was the plan, and that was the negotiation, and then that's it. So now they're at, whatever, 13, 14%.
And that was what the Muse was.
Yeah.
When we approved that.
Yeah. And so, and then, so there's that, and then to use public funds, you know, the state funds or the low-income housing tax credit, you have to be at a certain scale as well. So those are more, the deeper affordability, if you're interested in, you know, more affordable units than the 25%, or deeper affordability, then you're going to need some subsidies, and then it goes down a different path.
And how there's recent projects from neighboring towns that have used that approach?
Acton, Acton. Yeah, the Acton Housing Authority is doing, I think it's a 31-unit new senior housing development with low-income housing tax credits.
Okay. And they were, they were able to secure those tax credits themselves?
Yeah, almost there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's sort of similar to the approach with Christopher Heights where, but in that case, the developer was securing the tax credits, but the town could also pursue them for its own projects.
Sure, sure, the Housing Authority. And so like Peter Buckley used the tax credits, the same kind of public subsidies.
Yeah.
And so then you'll balance the number of units, again, with the wastewater constraints or other site constraints that you might have. So then it's really just a balance and to see, you know, if it's the right site to support that kind of development. But often with the larger developments, there's, you know, often some opportunity for Select Board support, put it that way.
Within Sudbury, who is the champion for the Coldbrook Crossing?
Town manager.
The town manager.
With the Select Board in support.
Okay. Other questions relative to this part of our topic tonight? Okay. I think then that we'll now move to a discussion, I don't know if it would be Lee or that, or Keith, or, I don't know, Richard?
What's the...
Or all of the above, to talk about sort of current projects in the offing in Concord. That is, stuff that's on the table that could be developed. And I think that, I mean, for example, we've got Esbit River Bluff as something, but I don't know if there are other...
They're in the housing production plan.
They're already in there, right? But...
What page, does anybody know what page that is?
I guess it's just to have a little bit more of an open discussion on what could be achieved short-term.
So I think that in the housing production plan, there's a pipeline chart.
Right.
And I think that's probably that where you could see...
Where you could see that.
This page 88.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that goes through, I think, really all the opportunities. Well, I'll say that additionally, tomorrow, Marcia put together a list of potential private sites.
There we go. That's the chart, yeah.
Private sites that 40Bs might be placed on, and we'll be looking at that tomorrow, but that's not in this document now. But this is the existing pipeline as we see it. So for this fiscal year, there's no new units.
Wow, so even Mill Run won't fall in this fiscal?
No, it'll be next year. It won't get, it's one unit, and it won't get counted until the unit is sold.
Uh-huh.
So you signed off on that application. It was, DHCD has a three-month turnaround, and then there's the lottery, and then, you know, like all that, yeah.
All right.
So for next fiscal year, it's one unit at Mill Run and one unit at Jarrow or Commonwealth Avenue. And then in the three to five years, Esbit River Bluff. We could stop there if you wanted to do an update on that, or I could just keep going to where you are.
Whatever the board prefers. Doesn't matter.
And then in the five to 10 years, there's a number of Housing Authority opportunities that are possible, a lot of feasibility that needs to look into that. And I think that there's nine here possible. A lot of them require sewer.
One of the ones that you mentioned, which is, I believe that that Walden Street development was connected to the sewer when it was built, because I remember when I was, did the financing for one of the banks to build that, and I believe one of the parts of the project was for the state to allow us to connect that development to the sewer that served the courthouse. So it may have sewer.
Yep. We...
We, um, so this was from the housing authority analysis, but it may have, may have. Um, I'll look into that.
Okay. And then the Bedford Street, it's, it's set up for sewer. It's just that the lot hasn't been connected.
Um, the sewer goes on the road.
Yeah.
But not, there's a house in the front and then in the back, there would be more opportunity.
I see.
So there's sort of two parcels there.
Right. And you have the single sewer connection rule.
So you have to kind of, if you, if the front house connected to sewer, it freed up the area where the current septic is and you could build in, in that spot.
Okay. Interesting.
Um, and then, then Junction Village, um, out there in the five to 10 year timeframe. And then upon vacancy, there are two housing authority properties that are not counted on the SHI now. So as they come up for vacancy, as the tenant leaves, there's an opportunity to turn them over and put them on the SHI.
Okay. So those could be very short term in theory.
Those could be, those could be anytime the tenant leaves. Yep.
Yeah.
And then longer term, uh, as mentioned, the 2229 Main Street and the Peabody Middle School.
Yeah.
And again, these are, these are, you know, properties in play now. There's any number of private proposals that might come forward that aren't reflected here, which is likely. That's really the likely scenario.
Yeah. And I think we recently lost some congregate housing units where, you know, it turns out each bedroom counts as a unit, which is intriguing.
Yes.
And that it does seem like a model that we could develop a group house and get multiple units that way too.
And Minuteman, Minuteman Art is very interested in that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't see that on here, but you know, I guess it's really beyond the concrete pipeline and it's more into the theoretical.
These have addresses versus a strategy that would need a site.
But I was thinking that in the action plan, there maybe should be like a 27 that I think of as thinking out of the box.
Yep.
And, you know, exploring alternatives that we haven't thought of before, such as this congregate housing.
Yeah. I mean, and I, you know, when I hear about, for example, Baker Ave, where we're developing a, you know, a pedestrian footbridge to the village where there's direct access to Route 2, there's very little, you know, immediate neighborhood impact. Certainly there would be some neighborhood impact, but it, it seems like, wow, you know, that's a site that could be further developed in theory, you know?
Right.
So there are lots of ideas out there.
And I'm sure that, I mean, housing is a very economically feasible use, you know, highest and best use. So I, you know, maybe, maybe some of the owners over there on Baker Avenue are interested in exploring.
Right. And I don't think that we want to reduce and affect our commercial property base either, you know? And so mixed use is interesting that way. And so, um, and, and perhaps it would have fare better than at Thorough Dipa, you know, that, and still has access to the commuter rail and all of that. So.
Yep.
Yeah. Mary?
I have a question. The Esbit River Bluff, it says some might come in earlier. What could we do to accelerate these?
So that we acquired the property in early August of this year. There's an existing two unit house that, um, one of the units is presently vacant and we're starting the process to renovate that unit as well as the house in general. Like, yeah, new roof, other infrastructure in the house. So, um, we're in the process of putting the vacant unit, um, into the pipeline to get it onto the SHI.
Okay.
As we speak, it'll take a number of months, but we're, we're advancing that.
Good.
Um, CHDC has decided, we would, we don't want to evict the other.
No, that doesn't sound, that doesn't sound good.
Okay. So you're waiting, you're waiting for them?
And that, we're, no rush on that, you know, whatever, however it shakes out there and then there'll be further improvements on that.
Yep.
So then that one would also enter the SHI process.
Yep.
And we're also advancing, um, concept plans for the other three units adjacent to that on the same site. And that'll take, you know, probably at least a year before, probably ready to go through, um, an RFP process to seek developers.
Really? Seems halfway long.
Well, it may help to wait right now, the current market circumstances.
Construction costs.
I, I would like to just remind the board that CHDC is presently consisting of four volunteer members, three of which have full-time jobs.
Yeah.
Liz does a great job supporting us, but you know, we're not her only responsibility. So, um, you know, we're somewhat limited in our capacity in terms of what we can do. These projects are very time sense, time, um, intensive. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, and in fact, that is one of the other things I wanted to explore is do we have the right model here, you know, for generating more affordable housing and what, what support could we give the CHDC, but also just what should the charter of the CHDC be in the era in which we now have an affordable housing trust as well? You know, do we need to relook at, at that, at that model and try to work on some way to accelerate our development capacity?
So it's, if I could, okay, after you.
Sorry. Um, just want to point out that, um, one of the primary reasons the CHDC exists as a private 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation is that it has the, um, legal authority to acquire property.
Yes.
In a different way than the town would, would be able to through town meeting, et cetera. So that's, you know, one of the reasons we exist. I'd be certainly open to a discussion about ways we can, um, either modify the existing enabling legislation or.
Yeah. I think it's, the entity is a great idea. I think that we learned that we couldn't with our previous structure move quickly enough on projects. It's really amount about how, I think the original vision for that entity was, oh, you guys will be the developer, you know? And I think it only took one project before that became real clear that no, that isn't going to be how this works. And yet I think it may still be on the books that that's what you guys are doing. And, um, you know, maybe we need to look at, okay, well, how, first of all, to kind of true up how you do operate with, with what it says in black and white, but then also to see, well, is there any way to kind of further shore that up, you know?
So Lexington, just, um, last week, I guess, or maybe the week before, had a special town meeting where they did two things. They want, they adopted Affordable Housing Trust and they revamped their, their local 501(c)(3) organization to really have those two sort of partner entities and the 501(c)(3) being separate from the town, so not subject to public construction. And the town way of doing things very important in order to, to get things done.
That's where I, certainly we want to preserve that element.
Right. And so part of that is, um, and they needed to, to do that because they found that their existing nonprofit had too much oversight by the town and was then required to follow the town procurement, even though it was a separate 501(c)(3). So very clear about where is that line between the town oversight and the town control versus the independent nature of the nonprofit.
Yep.
And so then they, then they have the trust with that local nonprofit, right? So to operate in pair, you know, for the funding and then for the development arm. And their, their not, their 501(c)(3) has paid staff, dedicated staff, you know, full time.
There you go.
But they have, they have 80 units of rental housing that they maintain. So they're more like a housing authority in terms of their operation.
Huh.
So it's a different, different thing.
So I think we've hit on something really key that we should look at in future meetings. I think, um, well, Liz, you hit on it when you said in, in this number 24, that, um, the select board should clarify the roles and responsibilities for, you know, for the various players, right? And, um, with volunteers with full-time jobs, there's only certain pace that you can go at. So I think Matt is right. We need to look at these rules and, you know, do we need a staff person? Do we need to change the charge? Do, you know, the select board.
Probably not a staff person. I mean, well, maybe a CHDC staff person, but not a town staff person.
Well, we need to look at the whole thing.
Yeah.
We need to take more leadership as select board. This is such a good opportunity to do it.
If I could offer one other thing, you know, this that we're pursuing, uh, home rule legislation for dedicated funding sources for the trust. If we were ever lucky enough to get those, those, that is how you would pay for the necessary funding for your designated nonprofit to, to be able to proceed. And I'll just use the example, another example, um, uh, the firsthand experience with on Nantucket, where I'm on a, a board of advisors for, for a nonprofit entity called Housing Nantucket. Its function, it, it, number one, does a lot of rental, how it owns property, it, it, you know, it has rental properties, it has a, it has a, uh, several, uh, full-time paid staff people. It performs a function that that town has, has identified that it needs a nonprofit to do. And then the funding comes from, just so happens it comes from the town, which appropriates $25 million, uh, per year for housing, not $500,000. But the point is that if, if there were more money available, uh, to, uh, to conquer through these home rule petitions that we're, that we're seeking, we would need to retool. That would give us the, the, that would require us to, to reconfigure. How do we organize to, to, to spend, you know, two and a half million dollars a year? What, what does that look like in order for us to proceed? Because the other thing that they were able to do in Nantucket is basically test out what density is acceptable for the community. Because the community decided the unfriendly 40B with 200 units was too many. The unfriendly 40B with 150 units was too, was too many. But when a pri, when a private developer went to the planning board, got him, uh, got a 22 unit, uh, development permitted through the planning board on his own. And then the town's housing planner partnered that developer with the Affordable Housing Trust and the, the nonprofit to say, why, do we have them, do we have the funds available to do that, do those 22 units in a, in a location that was already permitted? So, so it was within zoning. It was something the neighbors liked, the community liked it. It was a density that worked there. And so the challenge is to figure out what, what's density works. And then how, how much can you do through, um, through public funding? Cause in this case, those are, those are 22 affordable units. They're all affordable rentals.
Yeah.
If it's a mix of affordable and market rate, then you can, you know, then the amount of public funds you need is lower, but there's plenty of opportunity to figure that out.
Yeah. And, and I just, what I have vision is, uh, CHDC in which, you know, the, our volunteer members are more like the board of the nonprofit, right? Their, their board members and their staff that is pursuing this development ideally.
So the CHDC has no revenue sources.
It has none right now. No. So it's just whatever we can cobble together each year, um, you know, and from the housing trust.
First tenant.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, Richard, do you want to?
Yeah. I, I think there's one thing that's not in the pipeline analysis that we want to keep open and it will require the transfer fee and, and permit surcharge, which is to be opportunistic to get some of the older houses. I mean, you have rightly observed, we can't build a single family house for $700,000, but we can buy, uh, or perhaps even, uh, buy below market with the owner, uh, getting a tax break, uh, houses and then get somebody like Habitat, uh, to redevelop them. We did it at 930 Main Street. That happened because there was some money that the town had already appropriated for, from free cash. The foundation threw some in and then Habitat built it out. So, you know, I think what can be consistent with the town's desire about density, it won't solve our problem, but I think we can look at trying to get two or three units a year from existing houses, uh, when the opportunity comes up.
Okay. Um, all right. Well, so what the ideas that I've heard tonight are first of all, to investigate what we might want to do relative to town meeting on wastewater strategy and updating the town's goals relative to that. Secondly, um, that, well, it's with the planning board being the main body, look into inclusionary zoning, uh, possibilities. Thirdly, to, uh, think about the CHDC scope and charter, just how to strengthen that body. And then fourth, uh, Mr. Feely's idea here about, uh, trying to, um, identify buy down opportunities, which of course is somewhat opportunistic, but that you could foster. For example, I don't know that the, there's a lot of awareness of what kinds of tax breaks would be available to someone who's sold.
Basically, it's just like donating a conservation easement.
Yeah.
Um, if you sell below market, you can make the difference between market and what the town pays, uh, the same way you would if you gave a conservation easement, an open space.
Right. And depending upon the owner's circumstances, it might be very favorable to them to do. Yeah.
The other idea we had was a quarterly check-in.
Okay.
I think that's key.
Yeah. I think that we should be doing that regardless, but yes.
It might only take 15 minutes, but.
No. I think with all this going on.
Quarterly check-in.
This has been really valuable. I think it's really important for the select board to engage in this.
Mr. Chairman, I would add to your list, finding a way to pay for staff and the sooner the better, because I think.
Well, we have our things before the legislature, but is there something else that we could do on, on that front? Money, getting money. I mean, I got my wallet, but.
Money's always good in, for housing. Facilitates many things.
Donate to the foundation, donate, yeah. So, all right. I think that we'll leave it for there tonight, but there's more to come.
Sure.
Okay? And thanks very much. And I especially given the recent disappointments, I appreciate the, uh, willingness to come back and work with the board and, um, that, you know, I want to just say, I hope on the board's behalf, that we're very committed, uh, to these goals. It's, it's really been a matter of, I guess, the, and I wasn't part of the decision, but the, you know, the specific projects and, and we have to figure out how to not, to ensure that we're not turning individual projects into a kind of de facto strategy by not approving them. I think that, you know, with Jarrow, you know, we haven't had a good track record in terms of percentage of approvals of projects.
Right. Can I just make one quick comment about it? I think that having a quarterly meeting like this will really help. From my point of view, sometimes it felt like the select board was kind of out of the loop. And, you know, we, I think we on the select board should take a lot of the responsibility for not trying to stay more in the loop. It's, it's our fault as much as anybody else's. But then a project would come in and be looking for endorsement and we were somewhat surprised on some of the details. So I think if we have these quarterly updates and the select board can give input and be part of the brainstorming, be part of the creative thought that goes into, you know, everything about the project. And you guys are the experts, not us, but we want to be part of it. And then we're all a big team and I, I just think it, more projects will get approved when we're all working together.
So in Weston, I thank you, Terry. That's a good idea. Um, in Weston, they've implemented this concept, um, not as a called meeting of the select board, but one person from each of the groups just meeting. So it's not a, it's not a, you know, a posted, open meeting of any particular group, but it's sort of a working team through them. So it's a different kind of model that you could think about.
Maybe we need both. I don't know.
I'll, I'll also add that the housing groups meet probably quarterly already and select board members are welcome to attend.
Right.
Well, one other thing I might mention in terms of staffing is that we are in the process of reorganizing, reorganizing the, the planning and that function in the town. Maybe part of the function that might be built into the reorganized planning department would be, uh, somebody with more responsibility and serve as staff for the several, uh, housing committees and, um, corporations.
Yeah.
I see you.
So I just want to keep in mind that CHDC is a separate nonprofit, not part of the town. And so staffing it, you just want to, you know, find, make, find that right balance. But the trust I know is looking for staff, so.
Okay.
But anyway, yes, good idea. Thank you.
And CHDC is looking for additional volunteers to be board members.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now we're moving to the next item of the agenda, which is committee nominations.
Okay, here we go. We don't have any. Oh, wait, no, no, yes, we do. Sorry. Nicholas Purinton of 32 Crest Brook Road, and Margaret Peggy Lanieri of 65 Addawon Road, to the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee, and Evan Ricker of 104 Bolton Street, to the White Pond Task Force.
Okay. And then I just wanted to look back at, okay, Linda, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, is there a reason we're not putting the terms beginning at the nomination phase, just so we know what?
I think we've been just assigning them when we've made the appointments, but not when we made the nominations.
Right, but that does, it probably would be good if we can. There's no reason not to. I think if we just can come, a lot of times, these nominations are coming in, and we just haven't sorted out all the details yet. I, I wanted to, though, at this stage, before we move to the appointments, just point back to our committee town volunteer process that we worked on a couple of years ago, and that we have a chart that describes the roles and responsibilities of the board and committee chair, the members, and the Select Board liaison, and the Select Board as a whole. And so, you know, we have in that process this set of tasks related to selecting candidates. And there, you know, the idea is that the Select Board liaison and the chair of the board committee are supposed to interview the candidates, and then evaluate those candidates. And then, you know, the nomination comes in, you know, based upon the volunteer card that we have. And then we, as a Select Board, look at those credentials, as well as our impressions, you know, from those discussions to handle the appointment. And I just feel like in, in this case, there at least is, you know, one or two nominees who the, I spoke with the chair of the committee this past week, and he had not had any contact. So to me, I don't think that we have yet proceeded through the process that we have for volunteer here yet, and I would like to see that completed before we move to an appointment.
Matt, I wonder if everyone still has that chart?
Yeah, I can certainly send a copy to the board. Yeah, I mean, it's, we.
That would be good.
We approved it, well, this one is the FY22 version, but yeah, we've, we've had this in place for some time.
Right. Also, on the interviewing, I didn't think the liaison necessarily interviewed at every committee.
No, they're a supporting member of that process. They're not the lead, they're not the lead of that process. Yeah. And at least as far as this chart.
Yeah, it'd be good to send that out again.
Okay. Yeah, I realize that we, our board membership changes over time.
I haven't seen that, so that'd be great.
Yeah. Okay, can you move to appointments, please?
Okay, move to appoint Amy Beamer of 383 Pope Road, to the Concord Cultural Council for a term to expire April 30th, 2025, and move to appoint Carl Leibig of 12 Deer Grass Lane, Jen Keegan of 60 Highland Street, Beth Kelly of 39 White Avenue, and Jennifer Parker of 247 Lawsbroke Road, to the White Pond Task Force for a term to expire December 2023, following the completion of their final report to the Select Board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There's one more appointment on the back of your.
Right. Okay, thank you. And move to appoint Gail Dow, Chief Financial Officer, as the Towns of Concord's representative to the Concord Retirement Board.
Wow, do I have a second for that one?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Is that a town manager's appointment with the Select Board approval?
It's not. It's actually a Select Board.
Oh, because, that's right, that one.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I know Gail is, will be replacing me, and I know when I was appointed, it was directly by the Select Board.
Yeah, I think it might be in her charter.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
So did we vote that?
Well, no, I was just going to say, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, I think now we're moving to liaison reports. Anybody want to start?
I don't have specific committees, but an observation with correspondents that's come in from a variety of committees this week, and that is, it may be worth a Select Board agenda to talk about the committee charge, their recommendations to the board, and when a committee feels that their recommendation should be taken in whole by the Select Board as opposed to being recommendations. So, so there's a little bit of, it's, it's come up several times already this week, at least on, on my side, where sometimes a committee has made some recommendations, and either staff or the Select Board have a different view, and maybe want to go a different direction. And then they feel as though they have not been supported. And, you know, in some ways, there was a little bit of that feeling with the housing committees, but there are some now, some additional committees that are voicing that same concern. So I think we need to somehow have some discussion about.
Yeah, I, I think this has been on my mind as well. And, and while, of course, the Select Board does have authority in certain cases, and, and I think we do listen to boards and committees, there are times where the board's decision has varied from the recommendation. And, and it's interesting, because a lot of times, it's just one element, but it may seem like a jarring difference, you know, where the Select Board adopts many of the points, but not one major one, let's say.
And that's, I think that's an ideal when a committee is functioning well, and sometimes a committee is not functioning well. And some, I think a higher level of involvement of the Select Board and the Select Board liaison is important in order to make some changes that are necessary to improve the functioning of the committee.
And sometimes we've relied on staff to pursue and assist in accomplishing our goals, right? They're really the ones who are carrying out the task. So.
Well, or we have designated them.
Yes, right, right.
To do so. Yeah.
So, I attended the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee this last week, and that topic did come up. And this was an example where the Select Board adopted all their recommendations about Junction Park, except one. But there were some hard feelings, I guess. And even to the point where I felt the need to say at the end during public comment, how much the Select Board really appreciates their work, and how we did adopt all of their other recommendations. And I felt like that was liaison's role to affirm that, you know, we do value their opinion and their work, because they were a little not feeling that right, right then. So that was kind of interesting. And the other things, I attended the FinCom Capital Planning Forum, and the Personnel Board is continuing to work on the employee appeal, three different classifications, and they're working on the PSTF recommendations that are coming in, we hope, we think, at our next meeting. And that'll be.
What, Terry?
The Personnel Study Task Force.
Okay.
There's quite a bit in there, and.
Great.
I think we're, we're going to have quite a discussion when they come in.
Okay.
Okay, I have a lot.
Go ahead, Mary. Go for it.
Go fast, hopefully. DPW, even though we haven't enough of infrastructure, two short things. The COMAV work is delayed until next year. Remember the digging up of COMAV? That's delayed until next year because of drainage problems at Nishova Brook Bakery were discovered. So that'll happen in 2023, hopefully. Hubbard Street is done, some of the signage has been done, but there's a little bit of a conflict between signage that would be required for a complete street and what the neighbors want. So that is still to be resolved. The Rec Commission, they're having really good enrollment in a lot of their programs. It's really roared back from COVID, that's the good news. You might have noticed that the BD Center has reduced hours because they can't get enough lifeguards. So they had a really creative solution where they're offering free lifeguard training to people. So the reduced hours are going to be through the, through the end of November, and then they'll reevaluate December 1st and see if they can get the staff they need. The other thing about the BD Center is, is that we've talked about them coming into the Select Board and talking to us.
Yeah, about a strategic plan.
In January, right.
Okay.
If so, then again, that's one of our goals. So to come in, they have a new general manager. She's really good. So after the quarter is over, she'd like to come in and talk to us about her plans going forward, because there's some real capital improvements that need to be done there. Concord Municipal Light Board, I want to mention that, you might remember that we passed Article 38 at the town meeting this year, which urged the Light Board to come up with a plan within a schedule by December for generating 20 megawatts of electricity on solar on town land. And so far, they haven't made much progress towards that. So the deadline was December, here it is November. They're obviously going to need an extension. So I think we should probably make some movement towards them to get them to come in and talk to us about where they are and what their plans are.
I, I just happened to meet the chair of the Municipal Light Board at the town composting site this weekend.
Oh, good.
Yes, which is the place, by the way. I also met Richard Feely of the Affordable, of the Housing Foundation, who we talked about tonight's session. So.
Brian?
So Brian, he said that they had gotten a verbal recitation of, you know, objectives, but that he had asked for a written plan.
Yep.
And they, that was due this past week, but was not received.
Yep.
And that he has reiterated the request so that they, they can get a plan, but he does anticipate that there will probably need to be an extension to have a ratified plan.
Yeah. So I think we should just close that loop, at least by December, and an extension, and get a date for that extension.
Yeah, okay.
Does that make sense?
I think that that seems worthwhile.
Great. Okay, White Pond Task Force, as you noticed, I'm getting great response for the people that want to be on that task force. I'm actually going to ask Shannon to put on our next week's agenda, two weeks from tonight, to extend the membership from five to seven members, because I'm really just getting great response. Some of these people have great credentials, so I'd like to, to do that. We'll talk about that in two weeks. I went to the last section of the League of Women Voters, four session classes on diversity, equity, and inclusion. That was fabulous. And the takeaway from that is that zoning is one of our main obstacles to, but we could talk about that forever. And then finally, I'm meeting with Sandy Smith, who is retired bond financial advisor, helped municipalities issue bonds, lives in town. I'm meeting with Sandy, Bob Lashur, and Chris Reynolds this Thursday to talk about the terms of the bond. Carrie, do, does the Select Board approve the terms of the bond for the middle school?
So the, the language approved by town meeting is that the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board set the terms of any bond issue.
Right. So we're going to be meeting this Thursday to talk about, you know, various terms, and just get the conversation going.
Thank you for doing that. That's, we need that.
Yeah, we do. We do. And Sandy's great. Well, and Chris is great, and Bob is great, and I'm great.
All right.
So that's it.
Anybody else want to talk?
Did you, you said, did you say Sandy Smith?
I did.
Yeah. Yeah, he's been, he's been, he's in that business, and he's had a lot of very useful ideas. He's also been very helpful to me in other, other issues, because he's very active in the independent battery. And so has, has helped with regard to the public ceremonies and some of the issues there. And was very, was probably principally responsible for the fact that we had a Patriot's Day parade last year at all. I, I attended the Council on Aging Breakfast, Veterans, Veterans Day Breakfast on Thursday. And actually, I was, it was a very, very nice affair, just heartrending. So many old veterans there, and also Council on Aging members, like. So, and the, they had a bunch of children come and sing, and they had some, a nice talk from Bob Marquis, who was a, he's a Marine captain, who was actually, lives in, lives in Acton. And I met the new staff there, and they were just terrific at the Council on Aging. And the whole thing was run, it wasn't, it wasn't catered, it was run, the food was cooked and prepared by, I guess, volunteers for a group that must have been, I'd say, maybe 75 people, and handmade cards from children for the veterans, and nice placemats and everything. It was just, it was a very nice event. And then Matt and I went to the Flag Retirement Ceremony. Oh, by the way, Veterans, that breakfast, I did bring, took them greetings from our board, which were very much appreciated. I don't, I didn't say that, I was, that's what I was told, anyway. And then Matt and I went to the Flag Retirement Ceremony at the cemetery on Veterans Day on Friday, and that went off without a hitch, and it was, was nicely done. And that's always a wonderful ceremony with, you know, the whole spectrum of people, from Cub Scouts to people like Maynard Forbes, who are the whole range. And it's, you know, it's something where we, we don't have the opportunity to really display our patriotism sufficiently in this town, and that's one of those occasions where it really, I think, where it really reminds us of, you know, what we owe our country. Matt made a wonderful talk, as, delivered greetings from the chair of the board. And so that was, that was a terrific event. We met, I met this afternoon, that was my third meeting of today with a group of people at the Emerson Umbrella, from working group to work on bonding, bonding, branding, and a logo for the 250th anniversary. One of the, one of the people is working with a Communication Subcommittee to come up with some designs for a logo for the event.
Great.
The semi-quintcentennial.
Hmm? Semi-quintcentennial.
Semi, 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 semi-quintcentennial?
I hope that's not the logo.
The Concord Bridge, the Concord Bridge.
We're sticking.
You could make it out to a bridge.
That's right.
We are, no, we are sticking with 250.
Okay. Nice and short.
It's, we're, likely, the likely tag is going to be Concord 250. And that's, tells the story, it tells where it is, and it tells us what it is. And so I know it's deceptively simple, but now I think we're going to now work with a design to use on, you know, letterhead programs, tickets, publications, you name it.
Concord's cryptocurrency?
Concord what?
Concord's cryptocurrency?
Cryptocur, yes. We're going to, yes. We're gonna, yes. We're gonna have actually the whole.
We should call them bridges. We'd have a bridge to sell you. Yeah.
That's right. Well, except I think we'd have to consult the National Park before we sell it.
Okay.
Although we could maybe sell pieces of it.
Sell stamps and coins.
Oh, sell pieces of it.
So we'd actually have some collateral behind it. That'd be a really good, it'd be different from a lot of cryptocurrencies.
Okay, well, Matt, you're stealing my role as being the nut on this. So anyway, so that was, we're making really great progress on that.
And I just wanted to say, I attended the School Committee meeting via Zoom and the Assistant Superintendent and Chief Finance there gave a really nice workshop on the school finance approach, you know, and all the different funding sources and uses. And I think that the School Committee itself was, I think, really educated, so to speak, through that process. I think that there's less background on that committee in finance than, let's say, here on the Select Board for our budget, and their budget is bigger. So, so that's just kicking off their internal process. Of course, you know, meanwhile, there's the guidelines process. And that brings me to the second meeting that I attended, which was the Finance Committee Meeting, of course, following the second meeting of the capital planning process. And the discussion, no surprise, was very much focused on the middle school and the recent decisions that the Select Board took to submit a warrant article of 110. Also, just Bob Lashir had brought together a presentation of the possible taxation impacts, also taking into account the stabilization fund and different kinds of payoff approaches. And showed the relative impact of the increase in interest rates to the increase in scope, you know, the budget for the project, I should say, not scope, physical scope of the project. And so there was still quite a bit of concern on the Finance Committee about the cost and that some even discussion broached about that they might for once adjust the guideline down, not up, just because, you know, worries over this and trying to find a way to reduce the impact on taxpayers. So more to come, I'm sure, as the discussion goes, but I just thought I should relay the tone that I heard in the Finance Committee over that issue.
Matt, do Bob and the Finance Committee's models show that $548,000 per year savings? Are they going to net that somehow?
Those particular models don't. What, what, because what happens is that 548 is shown in the school budget. So if you look at the school budgets that they prepared for the guidelines process, you see that when the new school goes online, that that year, the projected increase in the school budget is, you know, it's visibly less. And that's the reason that they say that it is less, because they're taking, you know, a credit of that amount. That's FY26, I believe. It's right in there. Yeah.
So that money, instead of in guidelines or whatever going to the schools, it will go into debt service, I'm hoping that's.
Well, it just will reduce the otherwise increase in the school budget, which will then reduce the pressure on the tax base to go up. And so it's.
It will go over to debt service.
Yeah, I mean, that's the theory. It's just if we follow it.
That's what's going to happen.
Okay, good.
So essentially, $548,000 of school debt will be paid within the levy using that money that was previously appropriated to the school budget.
We don't have the 548, especially if you've got solar, it might be more.
Well, I think it's possible that the School Committee could come in and say, you know, we can't do it for whatever reason. I mean, but, well, I'm not, I'm not saying I like that situation. I'm just saying, but okay, it's being modeled this way. That's very good news.
That's how it's being modeled. So it's not being modeled in terms of like the specific taxation impacts of the bond issuance, you know?
That's okay. Okay, great.
What, the hearing is this Thursday, too. The hearing with the Finance Committee and the Middle School.
Yeah.
This Thursday, right?
Is it this Thursday? Wow, it all comes real fast once it does.
It's Thursday at 7 o'clock.
6:30.
Oh, is it 6:30?
The public hearing's at 6:30.
Okay, good. So it's this Thursday, here.
Yeah, the special town meeting, public hearing. Yeah.
It's interesting in the housing report that they show the projected school enrollment is, has been going down and will continue to decrease.
You're right.
That's right.
Of course, that doesn't mean the school budget will go down.
But it does mean we can afford family housing without burdening the schools.
Without triggering some massive increase.
Yeah. We have capacity.
Right. Okay, then I guess, is that everything for liaison reports this week? Because I know, Lyndy, you started with a general comment.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, great. Then for correspondence, I believe there are two letters in our packet that I'd like to acknowledge. One, let's just see, there we go. No, there should be two. The first draft of our packet had one, but now we have two. So one is from the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee, very much to the point that was brought up during our liaison reports about the short-term improvements and their disappointment, I think, with the approach that the Select Board took. Then second of all, a note from Dory Kehoe praising the Concord Trolley and encouraging, you know, more participation and encouraging.
She used it as transportation, not as a tourist.
That's right. Yeah.
So it's.
She would like to see that. And I, I mean, I think it would be wonderful to have, you know, municipal transportation.
Me too.
Sure.
Me too, I would love that.
There's still, there's quite a lot of demand in West Concord.
Yep.
So I think that's it, unless we have public comment. Does anyone want to make a comment? I see a hand. Please identify yourself and state your comment.
Hello, I'm Steve Sieszke, 76 Jenny Dugan Road. I wanted to just read off a comment that I prepared about the middle school. So thank you for the time. I've heard many of the discussions within the Board as well as other pertinent committees, and I wanted to make a big effort to increase continuity and improve communication between the various town committees and the Board. My hope is that we can work collaboratively to educate all the townspeople with the facts so that they're able to make a well-informed decision at town meeting on January 19th. I'm a metal, excuse me, I am a member of the Middle School Building Committee, but I'm providing my opinion tonight as a voter and a taxpayer and a citizen of the town. So first, to the Select Board, and about two hours ago, we were discussing the Minuteman Media Network and Communications, and I know you're looking to improve those. And so I would hope that there could be increased, you know. I'm sorry, I've been waiting for two hours and a lot of background. So, so could we request to the Minuteman Media Network post their recordings of the School Committee, the Select Board and the Finance Committee more quickly and consistently? I've been present at every school building committee meeting, however, I had briefly stepped away last month when a comment was fielded from the Finance Committee's observer to our committee, and I wasn't able to hear the comment. And I've been searching YouTube and the Minuteman Media website for that recording, but I have yet to be able to find it a month later. And so I'm sure that this person's comments are the type of informed and constructive exchange that would be valuable to both our committees and the public as we continue with preparations for January. So I was hoping that we can focus on those postings as quickly as possible. And so as for the school, there seemed to be misunderstanding about the process that I would like to clarify. So I'm not aware of a lot of the historical backlog of MSBA funding or the linkage to Peabody, so I'll put those aside, but I hope those topics could be clarified in the near future ahead of January. But what I would skip to, just to speed this up, is during the design development process that took place in the spring, final details of the education plan were implemented and the project was developed to a higher level of detail than was originally, you know, designed in the 2021 budget that was approved at town meeting based on 2019 and 2020 estimates, $85,000 to $100 million is the original proposed estimate. So when the $102 million came in in January, we approved that expenditure. Then in June of 2022, we received the estimate of $108 million on the design development set that was completed in April, and we were faced with a difficult challenge. This typically is the point when the design development team, its pencils down and the final construction documents teams takes over. Design is intended to be complete at that point, and all the architects' efforts are intended to be put toward completing a perfect set of construction documents. And that's an important step in a public project as it prevents costly change orders and limits our risk to uncoordinated sets of interdisciplinary design documents. More focus on the design mean more better details, which leads to increased cost certainty for the town. So for every value management item that is taken since the DD set issued in April, the town takes on additional risk of delay and cost increases for unforeseen circumstances throughout the building process. That is a fact. Nonetheless, the Building Committee took on the challenge of cutting ancillary scope to try to bring back the cost of the budget while maintaining the scope and schedule of the project. And we've got very close. The bottom estimate is still within the range of the original budget. There are three variables to every development project, scope, schedule and cost. In our case, inflation rose at an exponential or unforeseen rate throughout the construction industry and took the world by surprise. And I feel that the Building Committee has correctly spent a great deal of time and effort protecting the important aspects of the scope and schedule of the original project and by isolating the decision before the town to a single topic, and it is to spend more money on the original school or do we want a different school? Now to provide some detail on the value management process we took. If we had made the decision to design to the budget, it would have cost us additional design dollars because we would have been required to produce two sets of design documents, one set to meet the budget and another set to meet the scope expectations of the town. That was outside the Building Committee's responsibility and authorization, which is why we met on a middle ground approach, which is to design to meet the education plan, meet the expectations of the town and eliminate all extraneous variables to isolate the budget constraint to inflation only. We followed, we cut the following scope out of the school for the months of, throughout the months of June, July, August, September and October, sometimes meeting three hours at a time from, and calling in from all over the globe, including Canada, Matt, as you know. So we reduced the amount of lighting and controls outside. We eliminated the entirety of all the wood accent ceilings within the space. We changed inter ceiling conditions. We removed wood paneling from media centers. We reduced interior, or we contemplated reducing interior light shelves. We replaced curtain wall in the north art wall, art rooms with punched windows. We.
Yeah, I think we've seen that list.
Yep, we've seen that list. So thus far, the Building Committee has assembled a project that I believe best suits the needs of the town and the expectation of the education plan. I'm sure that this project would have cost the town $95 to $100 million in 2019, taking into consideration a standard rate of inflation. I think we've done our best to isolate the increase to inflation alone. As for the warrant, the Building Committee's decision to request $115 million rather than $108 million, which is the current estimate, is the simple issue of timing. We had to issue eight requests to expedite the review process and maintain our schedule back in October. So the simple idea was that we would update the value on the motion of the floor of town meeting, and it would likely be 108, 110, maybe 110.5 million dollars. We didn't know at the time. We could not request a low number because it risks putting the project on hold until at least May town meeting if we were even a dollar over a budget. If we had waited to ask for the increased spending until the 90% CD estimate was issued, as I've heard some on this board say, we would have had to delay the project by several months due to the authorization for proceeding with the design in May coming, you know, pausing the design until May and continuing on 60% and 90% construction documents after the fact, then it would have ultimately delayed the project, I believe, by the better of a year. Oddly, and we just discussed this, so this is prepared marks, the Select Board limited the warrant to 110 million, and I saw the deliberations and it appeared that the value limitation was based on a general consensus and gut feeling rather than actual facts of the matter. And maybe that's, you know, my perspective. But that said, I feel that the project is, you know, if the project is $10 million and a dollar, we'll have to work, you know, very hard in February to issue a new town warrant article for May town meeting, and hopefully it won't delay us more than four to five months if the town is looking to spend $110 and $1. The risk could have been eliminated by requesting a larger value now and adjusting the actual value of town meeting, but I understand there are political considerations for all of us in the town of Concord. And sincerely, I hope that the town can find a way to increase the warrant by that dollar if it is such a small amount to avoid that very unfortunate circumstance. If we do not pass, the process of redesigning the school will begin in February. First, we will cut decisions, decisions will be made to cut large scale pieces of the project, and then those will have to be voted upon by the committee, and direction will be needed to be given to the architects. Only after direction by the committee is given to the architect will they begin the redesign process of 60% and 90% construction documents. And after about six months of redesign, we'll have another set, estimate set ready for bid going out at 102.8 originally approved budget. That will inevitably include a smaller gymnasium. There will most certainly be a small, if any, auditorium, et cetera, et cetera, money.
Mr. Sieszke, we will be having, I know there are public forums planned, you know, where all of this information and more will be related. If you could wrap up your comments.
So the fact is that the taxes are already increasing by $1,000 a month. We've already, or $1,100 per month, I think we've already approved that. And if we were to cast this down, we will basically be left with constructing a project that is less attractive. It will come in later and it will cost us just as much for that product. And I really urge the town collectively to pay attention, to look at the Minuteman Media Network. If we can get those posted, that would be really appreciated, and I hope to see you all at town meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other public comment, I see another hand online. Please announce yourself and your address and make your comment.
Hello, I'm Nancy Brown and I live at 96 Forest Ridge Road. And I actually thought I sent a letter to you, but apparently you haven't received it and it's short.
We have received your letter, Ms. Brown. It was received after the deadline that we have for including letters in the packet, so it will be included in our packet next, next meeting on November 28th.
Okay, so you don't, it's only three paragraphs. I could read it to you now.
You can read it for the record now if you, if you would prefer.
It's addressed to the Select Board and Town Manager. In the summer of 2021, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee of the League of Women Voters of Concord Carlisle was very pleased when the Select Board agreed to establish a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. The Commission can play a critical role in advancing DEI in our community, but only if it has both the administrative and financial support. Appointing the Commission was the first step. Allowing it to flourish and adequately address the many DEI issues in our community requires a bona fide commitment by community leaders. It is disturbing to learn that after a year of work, the Commission has neither administrative nor financial support. There does not appear to be a staff person regularly assigned to the Commission. Rather, it is up to Commission members to scramble from meeting space and worry about other logistical details. The delays and roadblocks which the Commission encountered in attempting to survey Concord residents is a case in point. After trying for several months to. months to secure assistance from town staff, the Commission was forced to use their personal resources to initiate and process the survey. This is an embarrassment. If the Select Board believes the mission of the Commission, believes in the mission of the Commission, there must be a budgeted financial support. Concord is way behind many of its neighboring and peer communities in terms of its commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. As the Select Board approaches the budget season, it is critical that adequate funds and staffing be allocated to the Commission. And that comes from the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission of the League. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I don't know if you wanted to make a response, or do we want to? Okay. So other public comment, please? Yes, Ms. Drit.
Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green, Unit 4. I appreciate that you have a giant packet every week of all kinds of things. Could you please put a link to where we could find the packet online in the agenda, like the Planning Board does, and the Zoning Board of Appeals do?
Okay, thank you for your suggestion. Any other public comment? Oh.
Is there a reason why you can't do it?
I doubt that there is.
Well, the pack, the link to the packet is on, on, on the front page under, you go down to.
If you put it on the agenda, we don't have to look for it.
Click Board, and then you click on Meeting Documents, and it's all there.
And that's three different clicks. Please just put a link to it in the agenda so that your average citizen doesn't have to search. I appreciate you told me how to do that, Henry, and, and I can do that now, but it's, but I still have to remember how.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Okay, any other public comment?
Okay. Are we gonna have to adjourn?
Thanks. And yeah, I think we're ready to adjourn. So thanks, everyone, and see you again November 28.
Thank you.
Thank you.